Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council meeting for June 17th to order. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Sternquist, present. Councilmember Viscara is absent. Councilmember Yu is absent. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Bloom?
Here. This evening, for our invocation, we have Pastor Jim Walden with First Baptist Church over on Baldwin Avenue. He's a senior pastor who serves with other pastoral staff. First Baptist Church shares its campus with Rock Mountain, a Chinese congregation worships, and Ketchin Baptist Church, a Burmese congregation. The First Baptist Church services are mainly in English with translations available in Mandarin and Spanish. Their annual Vacation Bible School begins on Sunday evening, June 29th, at 6:00 PM and runs through Thursday evening, July 3rd. Their second annual sports camp for kids will run August 4th to the 8th. This includes basketball and cheerleading. Could we all please stand? Pastor Walden?
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we want to thank you so much for who you are and how you love us and how you love this town. God, you've shed your grace in America. We could not be more grateful. And Father, I ask for your wisdom and your grace to rain down upon this council tonight. Thank you for this city. And we ask that you would grant only your wisdom that you could give. And thank you for those who serve faithfully here. Father, lastly, I want to ask for a firefighter from Arcadia named Mike Herdman, who is missing, and searchers are out looking for him tonight. Father, we ask for your grace and your hand on them. If there'd be any way that he can still be found alive, that you would bring that about. Keep those search folks safe, too, as they're out there looking for him. Thank you that you, Father, are always looking for us, and you look out for us. We ask you would continue, as you have, to bless America as only you can. And we want to thank you so much for our freedoms that we have. In our Lord Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I'd like to ask Commissioner O'Leary to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, if you'd place your right hand over your heart, please, and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now go to item five on the agenda, ceremonial matters. I'd like to add a couple right in the beginning here. I'd like to ask our interim city manager to introduce a new key person of our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Michael Forbes. Michael is our new community development director. Michael comes from us, previously worked for the cities of Burbank and Glendora. For you Bruin fans, he's a UCLA graduate. So, we're really thrilled to have him with us. He'll be an outstanding addition to the city of Temple City, and welcome, Michael.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Viscara and Councilmember Yu.
Second.
Okay, so ordered. Okay, I'd also like to make a presentation to Captain Christopher Nie. Captain Nie has been captain of the Temple City Sheriff's Station from 2011 until just recently. He's being reassigned, and it'll be a great loss for us. Captain has done a great job for us, has met with us. He arrived not too long before the windstorms that hit our city, and he was a great contact and great coordinator in helping us through that emergency period. So, we, three of us, I think, attended a little retirement luncheon for Captain Nie, but we thought it was appropriate to bring you before the full council here, before the council, and present you with a certificate of our appreciation.
Not retirement, either.
This is not a retirement. I know it's a reassignment, so I'd just like to read, "An appreciation of your outstanding commitment serving our community throughout the years. The tireless effort and devotion you have provided does not go unnoticed. The city of Temple City greatly appreciates your time, dedication, and professionalism." Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, you'll say it. Yeah. I'll keep it short, I promise. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Pennman, citizens of Temple City, I just want to say, this assignment has been the highlight of my career and something I'll truly treasure. I appreciate the support that the city council, mayor, city manager have given, not only to me, but more importantly, to the men and women of Temple Station, who work tirelessly every day to provide safety for the citizens and community members in Temple City and the other cities associated with Temple Station. Truly been an honor, and I thank you very much. It's been an honor to work for each and every one of you, and as I said, it'll be the highlight of my career, so thank you very, very much.
This is 5A. This is the adoption of resolutions, actually, three resolutions, confirming appointments to the Parks and Rec, the Transportation and Public Safety, and the Planning Commissions. As you know, our commissioners have two-year terms, and so every two years, we end up either appointing or reappointing. We had a council ad hoc, I believe there were nine applications for six positions. The ad hoc reviewed the candidates, and we're here tonight to make some appointments. They're actually reappointments of our existing commissioners. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the three resolutions we have.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 14-5001, confirming appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Adopt Resolution Number 14-5002, confirming appointments to the Transportation and Public Safety Commission, as well as adopt Resolution 14-5003, confirming appointments to the Planning Commission.
Okay, could I have a second on that, please?
Second.
Okay, as we moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, they have been reappointed. I'd like the city clerk to administer the oath of office to the new commissioners, and then we'll present some certificates to them when that is finished.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward, Commissioner, Parks and Recreation Commissioner Donna Georgino, Crystal Haddad, Planning Commissioner Tom O'Leary, Stephen Curran, Transportation and Public Safety Commissioner Danny Redmond, and Osama Nimri. If you'll please join me at the front and face the audience as we take your oath of office.
I have Donna Georgino. Good afternoon. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. I am the president of the United States of California. I have the Constitution of the State of California. Again, this is a display of the great volunteer effort we have in the city, and I thank everybody for participating in that. Okay, we'll move to item C as a presentation by the South Coast Air Quality Management Commercial Lawnmower Demonstration. And we have the governing board member, Michael Caciati, to provide a PowerPoint presentation. Michael, thank you for coming.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Welcome. Council members, Mayor Pro Tem, staff. I just want to recognize this council, this program we have is called the Commercial Electric Lawnmower Demonstration Program. We've had this residential program for 11 years, you'll see it in a moment. But Temple City, based on your council's foresight, as you did with Rosemead, the bicycle path, is one of the first cities out in the San Gabriel Valley and United States to participate in this program. Only South Omahdi and South Pass are about the same time, a little bit ahead of you, but you are, after that, the only city in the San Gabriel Valley and probably United States to start this. So what does this program do? We want to show you. What are you pointing at? Oh, actually, we had a outside at the park on June 5th, 2014, we had to kickoff. You see some of the council members here, and there's also a council member from Arcadia showed up. And this lawnmower in the center that council member Fernando Viscar is in is this new, all-electric, no gas, no oil, no spark plugs, just an electric motor, electric batteries, 60-inch riding lawnmower, effectively cuts as good as any gas or diesel or propane lawnmower. We've got one on the left is also a push, I think it's a 30 or 40-some inch. Now, if you want to go, if you played a video, we had a little video that day, just watching the, in operation. It's actually on, you just can't hear it.
I wanted to take it home with me.
That's a new job description.
It goes really fast.
That's why he's not here tonight. He's still going.
He's out there mowing lawn.
Just a couple more slides. And this is, if you haven't yet, and I know Mayor Pro Tem says he has a lawnmower at home, but it's got a cord on it. We have our annual exchange every year. We just did it at the Rose Bowl, but there's one more left this year. And actually, it's June 28th, and so finally, in Anaheim. And what we've done is, in the last 11 years, we've exchanged 50,000 polluting gas lawnmowers for all-electric, cordless, plug-in lawnmowers. I've had one for eight years, still going strong, even though I reduced my lawn size. And the big thing is, I just saw your Relay for Life, we're here fighting cancer, and actually, one of the biggest causes of cancer is pollution. And what comes off your lawnmower exhaust is worse than the car, because a lot of times they don't have a catalytic converter which controls all that. So you've got nitric oxides, carbon monoxide, hydrocarbons, everything which is a precursor to smog, and we know causes or exacerbates asthma and may be a cause of cancer. So what this will do, and again, this program, here's some of the, if you're outside the park sometime, you see these going around. So the commercial mower is operated for many more hours than residential. The pollution are four times higher for NOx, that's nitric oxides, twice as high for fine particulate matter, PM 2.5, equals basically 90 cars per hour. So the electric model will be clean, green, about 50% quiet, no pollution, not only in the air, but a lot of times, and I used to, this is how I paid my way through high school, I cut grass. The oil, the gas, they spill on the park itself, and the kids, the animals that go by, they have to sniff it, smell it, or touch it, your body absorbs it. So this is a big thing your city is doing, and hopefully, you'll enjoy it. This is our residential program again. See. Okay, this is a program, so your city is part of the program, we're doing a demonstration program at AQMD, all four counties, LA, Orange, San Bernardino, Riverside. You get it for two months and a little more if you really want to. Don't pay anything for it. All we ask you to do is track it, assess its performance, and tell us how it operates. And then hopefully, in the future, you may want to purchase one. Upfront cost is a little more, but over the long term, the cost of electricity is about a quarter the cost of gas. We know at our park in Garfield Park, which is about similar in size to your park out here, we spend about $200 to $250 a month just in gas and cutting it. That doesn't include oil, et cetera. And the parts on electric, if you see in the back, he opened it up, there's basically a few wires, a battery, and electric motor, and the cost of operation and maintenance is about 10 times less. Again, 50% less noise, major cost savings over the term of the mower, different styles. The program, moving it after you, will move it out to Claremont and other cities in the San Gabriel Valley. And Sashi's our staff member, if you want any more information on these items. So Mayor, council members, I thank you so much for being a part of this unique type of demonstration program we're doing. And actually, next month, we're going to determine whether we want to expand it to about five or six mowers throughout the four-county district, and a lot will depend on how your performance goes.
Okay, Michael, thank you very much. If you don't know, in addition to being on the South Coast Air Quality Board, Michael's a city council member in the city of South Pasadena. So thank you for your service, not only there, but as we all know, there's other committees that we serve on and get involved in. So thank you very much for that. And I agree with you, I mean, there's nothing like going into a park, looking for a nice, quiet setting, and the maintenance guys are out there, "rawr," running around, and so good. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I just want to quickly share with Michael, we've begun our Little League tournaments this week. South Pasadena, of course, is one of the cities that participate in District 18, and Edlivo Park, and I'll have to say that the fields and the grass look fantastic. I had the opportunity to speak with some of our staff, and they love it, and everything's working out well, and so thank you again for that, doing the job it was supposed to do.
Mayor Pro Tem, one thought, when we did the first demonstration about six months ago in South Pasadena, I have two Labrador Retrievers, and this is actually a fact, they were sitting with me and all the people, you know, the participants, and I didn't realize we were talking, the mower had gone by five or six times, and my dogs didn't even move any hate lawn equipment, they'll run away, they'll pull away, and somebody goes, "Did you drug your dogs?" I said, "No, you just can't, it's like a vacuum cleaner." So thanks, thanks, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael. Okay, we'll go to item 5D, presentation is the Temple City Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Update. Council or Chamber President and CEO, Peter Choi.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bloom, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, city council, city staff, Temple Cityans. First, I want to say how much I enjoyed that presentation, Michael. There's that phrase, "As exciting as watching grass grow." There should be a new phrase, "As exciting as watching grass being mowed." That's really thrilling and cool. Okay, enough digression. Here with the quarterly report. First, I would like to congratulate the city on the Rosemead Go Street Fair. Thank you, Mayor Bloom, for pointing out, encouraging the attendees to dine at the local restaurants. The businesses along Rosemead have been hit a little hard, but they've been very patient, they've been very excited. It was a great day, presented Temple City in a great light. The chamber did do a full-page ad in our paper. And again, thank you again, Mayor Bloom, for encouraging the attendees to check it out. We invited all the restaurants along the Temple City stretch of Rosemead Boulevard to take out a full business card-size ad, put whatever they want in it, and we promoted them not just that day, but through the course of the month. Again, it was a great job, and I really congratulate, especially the city staff, when you worked so hard on that. On May 2nd, the chamber was very delighted to co-sponsor, promote, and assist Free Dental Care Day, hosted by one of our chamber members, Dr. Tai K. Mao of Pinnacle Dental, right here on Las Tunas, on the other side of Carl's Jr. Thank you, Mayor Bloom, for attending and honoring Dr. Mao. Dentistry from the Heart Program provided free dental care to those who could not afford service or do not have dental insurance. That day, 59 people were treated for an estimated service value of over $28,000. And so congratulations to Dr. Mao. Thanks very much to representatives from our elected officials' office, Congresswoman Judy Toose, State Senator Dr. Hernandez, Assembly Member Ed Chow as well. Before I move on, I also want to highlight a remark by our interim city manager, Mr. Penman, in the current issue of Connect Magazine, where he encourages folks to enjoy a staycation here in Temple City. This is something the chamber supports very much. It's a great thing. There's also a thing called "ve-education," where you shop in the city, then you come home and you watch Netflix for 13 hours. But I, whether it's the "ve-education" or "staycation," this is a good thing. When you vacation and staycation in Temple City, your money, those state sales tax revenues come back into the city, provide the services. So thank you, interim city manager, Penman, for highlighting that for the summer. This year is the chamber's 90th anniversary. And founded in 1924, we are celebrating our 90th anniversary this year, so we are kicking it up a little bigger this year for our annual awards and installation. As people know by now, we don't do the same thing every year, and this year, we'll be doing something we're calling a Night at the Gatsby. It's a 1920s-themed evening of casino games for some spectacular prizes. And we will, of course, honor outstanding members of our business community and install our new board. This will be on Saturday, August 16th, 6:00 to 9:30. And a portion of the proceeds will go to benefit the Temple City Sheriff's Station, specifically to improve and upgrade their gym and workout room, which is in a bit of disrepair. So we'll be helping a good cause. You get a chance to play craps and roulette, which you normally don't do in Vegas, because it's too risky, but Saturday, August 16th is the night to do that. And I'm happy to announce and proud to announce our eight honorees this year, first time publicly. Outstanding business, this year, we are honoring Dr. Tai K. Mao and Pinnacle Dental, for reasons that are obvious from what I've just said, and also Temple City Animal Hospital. Outstanding restaurant this year, I was delighted to recognize El Ruiz Senor Grill. And for outstanding business, Beautiful, Cow's Jewelers. And for our outstanding community service, we're honoring two folks in the community, Pastor Jim Walden of First Baptist Church, and our own Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Tom Chavez. I must note for the record that, as some may know, Mrs. Chavez, as the executive director of a nonprofit, serves on our board. She did not nominate Mr. Chavez. He was nominated by someone else.
I heard she didn't even vote for me.
I tend to not discuss what happened in the boardroom, but I will share that one fact. I will break the code of silence just to note that. And back to business, if you're interested in getting tickets, there's limited availability, so please call the chamber office or any of our board members. At our June 9th executive board meeting, we had a visit from Jim Houghton and Suzie Koo, who are representing Randy Wang and what was formerly the Gateway Project and is now called the Camellia Square. But as you can see, it is happening, it's not just dirt being moved left and right, it is rising. I understand the city will be meeting with Mr. Houghton this week, so I won't go into too much detail, except to say that essentially, this is the number-one question we get at the chamber, we get drop-ins and walk-ins who walk in and ask about the project, because it's right across the street. At the meeting, Mr. Houghton spoke about how basically they're looking for the anchor tenant first, and then they will fill in the smaller spaces. And it's difficult, because you have to look at the logistics of where other businesses are. I personally would love a Bevmo, but there's one too close. But they're looking at the anchor tenant, and then they will fill in the others. In terms of the construction, it will be completed around November, and then after the winter break, starting, they'll start tenant modifications, and with an eye to a grand opening in spring. This is all down the line. The chamber was very happy to support and promote and assist and discuss it, and they were very open, so thanks very much to Jim Houghton of NAI and Suzie Koo of RE/MAX. There is in Temple City an American Legion post, number 279. It's at 9522 Las Tunas Drive. These are, the American Legion is an organization for veterans who have served during a time of conflict. And the chamber is starting to work with them to start a jobs-for-vets program. They meet the first Wednesday of every month, there is a potluck dinner, and I'm just putting it out to people that even as we're just starting on this process, if you know any veterans, especially younger veterans coming back from Iraq or Afghanistan, please have them contact us at the chamber. We'd like to get them in touch with the American Legion. They can talk with other veterans who are a little more senior in years, have had the benefit of some time to process that experience. I think it would be a good thing for them to meet, and they would love to welcome the younger members to the American Legion Hall. Again, just have them reach out to the chamber. You know, employment...
Peter, just real quick, you might want to reach out to Sharon Johnson of the Blue Star Banner Program.
We have. We have. She was the first call we made. So she's already, thank you very much, though.
Oh, that's good.
And any other tips like that, please share, but yes, we have reached out to Sharon of Blue Star Banner. And, you know, the employment for veterans is 9%, which is down from 10% of last year, but it's still well above the 6% average. Finally, I would like to note that, in closing, the final thing I'd like to mention is, there's an agenda item 10A tonight, which is under New Business. It's, Singtown Newspaper is requesting to once again host a New Year's Street Festival. I believe that it'll be stretched to two days, the 2015 Singtown Lunar New Year's Street Festival, and this is something the chamber very much supports. The chamber is very open to working, assisting, and helping them in any way. And even though we will not be here later in the meeting when they will speak, certainly, we've had a great experience working with them. I think it was very clear to anyone attended, just like the Rosemead Go Street Fair, this street fair was a fantastic thing to happen, certainly a couple of notches above the previous Chinese-oriented street fair. And we vouch for them, think they're great, May &amp; Company, and we look forward to helping them in any way, should the city choose to go forward with that. And so, thank you very much, and that is our report.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Anybody have any questions for Peter?
Great.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll now go to item 6, which is public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address city council is highlighted on the first page of this agenda. This section, we'd like to limit each presentation to three minutes. I have two people that have asked to speak. First, Jake Ferntile. Jake, you want to come on up?
My name is Jake Ferntile, and I am the vice president of the Temple City High School Band. I am here today to thank you for your support and for buying uniforms. We have just ordered the uniforms, and we are hoping they come in soon. And we cannot have gotten here without you. And we heard you got the lanyards, but have any of you not received a lanyard? Looked like this. Or have you all received?
Helen gave it to us last week. Helen gave those to us last week, or some of us, anyway. They're beautiful. Thank you. Did you get one?
Yeah, I got one.
Well, thank you for the support.
Thank you very much. Good luck to you. Yeah, good luck in the parade. Look forward to the parade. Okay, the second speaker is Steve Steffi.
Mayor Bloom, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, council members, city staff. My dad lives in this town, I come up and help him, and I've been noticing they've been putting up these street sweeping signs. However, they've been making a ton of mistakes. I just spotted one today going with my brother doing errands for my dad at Bisbee and Temple City Boulevard. They put it on a telephone pole. That's illegal. You can't do that. I also, at some point or other, pointed out to the city in front of Cloverly School, they put some traffic signs on a telephone pole. Supposed to be on a regular metal post. Getting back to my main subject here, the street sweeping signs, they have Thursdays, and they don't say "except holidays." I did speak to the Public Safety Officer, Robert, he did it, they're going to put a sticker on the sign. This should have been done months ago, should have been noted. The other thing is, some streets, like where my dad lives, 9600 block of Nadine Street, they have signs on both sides. You go to the 9700, there's only one on one side. That means everybody's, that side's going to get street swept, everybody's going to come over on our side, we're going to come over there, it's going to be a total disaster. 9700 block of Nadine, which is the next street up, the streets go like this, and there's a T for Danes, it ends 9700 block. They got one sign there, so they're going to do the whole street there. It's like there's no consistency here. I also saw this on Harker, which is off of Broadway, two blocks west of, or east of Rosemead. It's a dead-end street. It's like, there's just no consistency here. Another thing is, they have street sweeping 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM. I see that as being problematic. The street sweeper's going to show up at 6:00 o'clock, the sheriffs over at Temple Station are going to get a lot of calls of disturbing the peace. I've never seen a city start at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. Most cities have ordinances prohibiting construction and equipment like that from not starting until 7:00 AM in the morning. It should be 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, not 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The 6:00 AM and 11:00 AM is good for one area, Las Tunas, Temple City Boulevard in the commercial area, and Rosemead Boulevard. That's where 6:00 AM till 11:00 AM should be. And maybe Temple City Boulevard in front of the high school, places like that. That's fine, but not in a residential neighborhood. It's like, I, at one point, got a ticket in East LA, and the signs were like this, and the judge dismissed the ticket, because it didn't say "except holidays." I got a ticket on Lincoln's birthday, that's a county holiday. I did the smart thing, after I got the ticket, drove over to the courthouse in East LA, and the courthouse was closed, said county holiday. So I know what I'm talking about here. This is, these signs are not consistent, not done right, some of them are posted illegally, and they need to, somebody needs to go out and look at what's going on, because it's not being done right. You guys are going to, this is going to end up being a disaster.
Okay, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure staff will look into that, and, you know, it's, obviously, we're implementing this in the city. It is complicated to get all these, you know, coordinated together, and I believe that street sweeping now is early in the morning also, because I know that I hear the sweeper going by, I'm not sure if it's 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, so it's not unusual to do that. So we'll have staff, you know, look into it, as I'm sure they have, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are there any other public comments? Okay, if not, we'll close public comments at this time. We'll move to item 7 on the agenda. It's the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, unless removed for further discussion. If members of the city council or persons in the audience wish to discuss any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. Okay.
Mayor.
Motion to approve.
Excuse me, sorry. I'd like to amend the meeting minutes of June 3rd, 2014, under item 10C, and council member used motion to strike and approve or amend the priorities for the open park and master plan.
Okay. One small correction.
Okay, motion to approve with that correction.
Okay, it's been moved.
A second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the consent calendar has been approved in total. Move to item 8, public hearings. There is none. Item 9, unfinished business, there is none. We have new business. Item 10...
Mayor Bloom, before we proceed with that, I'm going to respectfully recuse myself from this matter. I have, as an attorney, performed legal work in the past for Singtown Newspapers, and after discussions with our city attorney, have determined that certainly there is a potential for a conflict of interest, and under our current rules, I'll be not participating in this matter.
Okay.
So I'll step out.
Okay, that's for item A. That's a request from Singtown Newspapers, Los Angeles Limited, for the city to host and co-sponsor the 2015 Singtown Lunar New Year's Street Festival. Could we have a presentation by Public Safety and Service Manager, please?
Mayor Bloom and council members, before you, for your consideration, this evening is item 10A, which is a request from Singtown Newspapers for the city to host and co-sponsor the 2015 Singtown Lunar New Year's Street Festival, and prior to my staff report, representatives from Singtown are here to give a presentation.
I was going to say, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Mayor and council members. And I'm representing Singtown.
This is me, from Singtown, too.
All right, so I would just like to briefly go through the event from last year. We are requesting this year, for next year, to, for the city to co-host, co-sponsor the event for January 24th and 25th. So this is from last year, a group photo. We also invite the Royal Courts from the Camellia Festival. So here are some facts that happened earlier this year. It was estimated over, about over 10,000 attendees, and then these attendees were not only from Temple City, but also another, the city around this area. And then it also generates crowds to local business during and after the event. So you can see the picture over there is for Wells Fargo, they did not, they did not, how do I say this? Yeah, they did not, they did not purchase any booths from us, but they have their own table outside their bank, but still gets a lot of crowds. And then even if the event was over, when we were cleaning up the street with the city staff, and we still see a lot of people coming in, saying, "Oh, is the event over already?" So I, I know that there's a lot of attendees wish... So I, um, there, uh, I know that there's, uh, a lot of attendees wish, wish to have the event longer, and, um, maybe to have them to, uh, to have the event, um... To have the event to, uh...
Extend it?
Extend it to next, uh, second day, sorry. And here's some elements from, uh, earlier this year's, uh, New Year's Street Festival. So there is, the foods were provided by food trucks and booth. We can see, um, council, council members, Stinkless, with, uh, City of Walnut's council members, and Ed Rose. And then there's, um, some more picture about, um, the food, food trucks and the food booth. And then we have some general booth from the local business and organization from the Temple Cities and other cities. And then we also have light entertainment whole, throughout the whole event, and it was multicultural. So that, that's about it.
Mayor Blum and council members, as I mentioned earlier, the item tonight would, for your consideration, is to host and co-sponsor the two thousand fifteen Singtown Lunar New Year Street Festival on Saturday, January twenty-fourth through Sunday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, dependent on Singtown's completion of the conditions noted in the staff reports before you. On November nineteen, two thousand thirteen, city council approved hosting and co-sponsoring the two thousand fourteen Chinese New Year's Festival that was held on Saturday, February first, two thousand fourteen. On February first, two thousand fourteen, Singtown held the two thousand fourteen Chinese New Year's Festival. There were no logistical problems associated with the event, and residents' complaints were minimal and were associated only with the lack of street parking in residential streets during the event. On March twenty-fourth of this year, city staff received a special event permit application and a proposal from Singtown requesting that the city host and co-sponsor the two thousand fifteen Singtown Lunar New Year's Street Festival. Between that date and May sixteenth, city staff reviewed the special per, event permit application and conducted an analysis of cost that would be associated with the proposed expanded scope of that event. This will be Singtown's fifth Chinese New Year's Festival. Previous festivals have been co-sponsored by the City of Walnut from two thousand eleven to two thousand thirteen, and last year with the City of Temple City. In light of a successful two thousand fourteen event, Singtown is requesting to expand the scope of the event to include expanding the event to a two-day festival. Singtown is also requesting approval to lengthen the event area. The proposed event area would be from Las Tunas Drive between, on Las Tunas Drive, between Temple City Boulevard and Roland Avenue. Additionally, Singtown is also requesting approval from the city to sell alcohol and provide free samplings of alcohol, beer, and wine. As identified in Singtown's proposal, they are requesting the city to be responsible for certain items that are noted in attachment C of your staff reports. Based on staff's assessment of Singtown's experience in successfully coordinating similar events in the cities of Walnut and last year in the City of Temple City, staff is comfortable with the city council tentatively approving the event dates and identifying the city's level of participation in the two thousand fifteen Singtown Lunar New Year's Street Festival. If approved, staff is requesting that Singtown complete, uh, the following items by October thirty-first of this year. Those items would be the submission of a revised special event permit application, completion of this, the event's proposed public safety and traffic plan, and receipt of payment for Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and city fees necessary for staffing and logistical support of the event. The city would still hold the discretion to cancel the event in the case that the special event permit application was not completed to the city's standards relating to public safety and content of the event. There were no funds allocated in the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen city budget for this event. Approval of this event would require the payment of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-four cents by Singtown. Should the city council determine that it wishes to provide some financial assistance to Singtown as part of choosing to host and co-sponsor the event, the city council may choose to waive all or a portion of the fees associated with the event, and a budget amendment would be required. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Okay, are there any, any questions at this time? Okay, uh, let's, let's go to public comments. Want to go to public comments first? Then, then we'll talk. Okay, we'd like to open it for, uh, public comments. You may just have a seat for a few minutes here. I'm opening public comments. Anyone care to comment on this?
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'd like to ask Mr. Sahagan, what was the, or if you know, what was the event name when it was done previously?
The two thousand fourteen event, Jerry, was, um, the two thousand fourteen Chinese New Year's Festival, and Singtown is proposing to rename that to the two thousand fifteen Singtown Lunar New Year's Street Festival.
And Temple City's participation or co-sponsorship, what would that get us or bring us, other than it was a Chinese New Year Festival before, now it has Singtown's name to it? And, uh, just to, I think closing down Las Tunas from Temple City Boulevard to Roland is a terrible idea. And, uh, I don't know about the two days, the, the jury would still be out on that, but I'm definitely against the free alcohol. Uh, I think that's inviting problems, so that's just my personal take. But, uh, what was wrong with just plain old Chinese New Year celebration rather than Singtown? Uh, it just does not make sense to me. So thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else care to, uh, speak?
Mary Kokako, Temple City resident. I kinda, uh, feel the way Jerry does. I think the way it is, it's, uh, celebrating their New Year, but I don't think the city should be involved the way, uh, it's being presented now. I don't think it should cost us any money if they want to present. This is gonna open up a door for other things. What about Cinco de Mayo? They want to come in, we're gonna do the same thing? I don't think the city should pay anything toward this. Uh, if they want to have their New Year, like in the past, they can celebrate it, but I don't think the city should be involved in it. And, uh, as far as alcohol and all that, it's gonna be too much like a commercial thing now, and we're not making any money on it. Uh, and I'm not against them holding the New Year, but the way it was in the past, it's just a celebration for our area or whoever comes around, but this is gonna be a big production. Don't forget, it's gonna involve sheriffs. There's a lot of expense, so think about it. You can have a, a real nice celebration, but not going commercial.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, Steve?
Mayor Blum, uh, council members and city staff, as, after listening to this, I've got a couple questions. The free alcohol, is that legal? You know, when you see advertisements at markets with coupons, it says liquor, milk products excluded, and I've been told that it's illegal to give alcohol away for free. And I don't know if that's true or not, but that's a question that, you know, I think the alcohol for free's a bad idea. I think that something happens, I don't know what ATF would say about free alcohol. That, that's a very good question. I see a problem with the free alcohol. I've seen, like, this area on another festival they had last year, between, I think it was between Temple City Boulevard, maybe Roland, maybe Agnes, they had the area shut down. I didn't notice any problems, but I think the free alcohol could be a problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, is anyone else care to, uh, speak?
Hi, good evening.
Please give us your name, please.
William Mann, resident. Mayor Blum and council members, um, I guess from, I'm here to provide a slightly different perspective on this Lunar Year, I guess Lunar New Year Festival. From, as you can probably tell, my background is Chinese, um, and part of the draw of the festival is that it provides a lot of nostalgia for many Asian residents, and if you've ever visited Taiwan or any parts of China, um, the street fair is ingrained in the culture. And I think a lot of, as we know, there is a heavy Asian population within Temple City, and, uh, part of this is, I mean, it's, it only happens once a year. It brings a sense of nostalgia and joy to see that the country they live in now is able to celebrate that type of, uh, cultural diversity and is open-minded about that. Um, I, I do agree with some of the residents' concerns about alcohol being served in the public. Uh, I think that's, that is a slippery slope to go down. And it appears that, uh, based on the lu, the festival that was held earlier this year, that there appear to be very little logistical problems, and it seemed like it was safe. Uh, and another thing that came to my mind was, uh, if anyone has ever been to the six-two-six Night Market Festival that's hosted in San Anita Park in the city of Arcadia, um, I, I think of this as a toned-down version of that. That one's kind of taking it to a whole different level, and I agree that for the size of our city, that, that's kind of outrageous. I think, um, by closing off a section of Las Tunas, we're kind of drawing a happy medium between that and what our city can actually accommodate. Um, so in, in other words, I, I think, um, the city council should fully support this festival, granted that all the items that, um, Mr. Sahagan had prepared in the staff report are addressed, uh, because I do think that, uh, s- safety and public safety is definitely a number-one priority for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, William. Okay, anyone else care to speak on this matter? Okay, I will close public comments. We'll now have council discussion. Council member you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have had to launch Asian events in the past, uh, kind of a first for our city. As many of you know that, um, in the two thousand ten census, uh, the cities actually have fifty-six percent, close to sixty percent perhaps by now, residents of Asian descent. We have, um, we have been very successful in a lot of our community events, uh, the Concerton Park, the Camellia Festivals. But I think one of the things that, as a city, we need to respect all of our residents, um, and we need to have events that, um, that would really cater to all, you know, all, all of our residents, and, and basically wherever their, uh, background may be. Uh, we have had some trouble attracting, uh, a lot of our Asian residents to come out. And I think the last two events, the, um, the Happy Moon and also the Lunar New Year Event last year, or actually earlier this year, have proven to be a, 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 a lot, a wild success. We have improved, um, from the Happy Moon Festival, where we have heard that it had been maybe perhaps a little too authentically Asian. Um, so I think in the, in, in the last event with the Lunar New Year Event, it has been more inclusive, and we have received a lot of good comments afterwards. Personally, I have, uh, heard from other cities, and they were actually quite envious of what we have achieved. So I think it's a good event that we need to do, continue doing. Um, I remember, um, just a Singtown reporter, we actually had to chase people away after six o'clock, um, at the last event. People were, um, very happy. Um, and, and the comments not just, the, they were not just from Asian residents or Asian visitors, and there were many people, because, you know, we actually had a booth, as you, some of you may remember, we actually, the city council had a booth, so I was talking to a lot of people. It was a great time to actually meet up with all residents, not just Asians. And, and I think the, it's a big, well, it's a, it's a big town, relatively speaking. Uh, I think we should, need to try to accommodate, um, all different interests. Um, and, um, just like the Camellia Festival last time that served alcohol, um, I don't know about free sampling, because there need to be some kind of control built in, um, but we have had good success, and then I think the number of people who spoke tonight actually enjoy the Beer Gardens. And, um, so personally, I'm not a drinker, I don't drink at all, but, um, I, I think we need to have events that, um, that anybody can, can enjoy. I think the, with the last event, it's proven that Singtown can handle a large event like this, and staff and, um, have had a lot of experience in, in, in similar events, so I am comfortable in moving forward with the, with the event.
Okay, council member Sternquist?
Just a couple of questions first. Last year's event was from nine to four, is that correct? Nine to five. And the request is to extend that from nine to seven. Is that correct? That's what I seen on the application, but then I, another place I saw nine to six, so I'm wondering what...
To eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty. What is the actual time? Nine to six? On both days? And I agree with council member you that, um, we need to, you know, reach out and have events in our city that, uh, everyone enjoys, and I think Singtown did a, a great job of being inclusive with the types of food that you brought. It, there was, you know, many different types of food trucks, and, um, I think it was overall a very enjoyable afternoon. What I do have a few concerns with, though, is when we, when we compare it to the Camellia Festival, because Singtown is a for-profit organization, is it not? It's a not, and the Camellia...
It's not, not a nonprofit.
It is not a nonprofit. And the Camellia Festival is a nonprofit organization where the monies go, um, directly back into the community and supporting the community. So I, I don't look at them as, as similar events in the sense of, you know, one is a for-profit and one is a non-for-profit. So I think I'm a little bit more cautious when it's a for-profit organization coming into the city and doing an organization. And with that said, I have a, a huge concern about the free alcohol. Um, I, I honestly don't think that I could support, um, the event with the free alcohol. The, if we're gonna use the Camellia Festival as a sampling of, you know, how to do something right, that Beer Garden was done extremely well. The children were separated from, you know, going into the actual part where the alcohol was, was being served. It was extremely well monitored. I could not get into the Beer Garden without my ID. I, I told the gentleman, my picture's up there on the wall, I'll take you in to see it, and he said, I'm sorry, but I, I cannot let you in. I think Mary Kokako was asked, you, you know, I need to see your ID, and that... And that was the, that was for everybody, because they didn't want to have any problems. But when you give away alcohol free, you know, when things are given away free, whether it's a Slurpee or we have Starbucks, people are kind of just, you know, in line taking it. Nobody's going to take the time when you're giving away free samplings to be checking IDs. It's just not going to happen. That's the reality of it. If the alcohol was approved, I would, you know, suggest that you reach out to our Camellia Festival director, Nan Fish, because they definitely did it right. And I think I would feel more comfortable knowing that, you know, you're working with her and how they did it so that there aren't any problems. So that would be, and I'm sure you're willing to do that. You've met with Nan before and, you know, had communications regarding the two festivals. The two-day event, I know it's a lot of setup. And when we talked after the Saint Tao event, a few of us council members got together just to talk about how the event went, how we could make it better. And I think we did agree that expanding the event to two days, as long as it was within the same time constraints, would be great for, you know, the residents, because it was, they set up and then it seemed it was over. So I don't have an issue with the two days. I mean, when we did the Camellia Festival and we closed down the street for, you know, three days, there was, you know, some people were unhappy, but in general, I think it was done well. And the staff supported it and ensured that everything went smoothly. So, I mean, I think it's a good event. I would make a recommendation that it's approved with, without the free alcohol. And working with the Camellia Festival director and the people she worked with to ensure that that sampling, or not the sampling, but are your intentions to do it in a specific place like the Camellia Festival had it and when the alcohol's being served in one specific place? Is that on the street? Is it in the park? Where, where is that proposed? Is it on the map, Robert?
No, before you, council member Sternquist, is, the council right now would be approving the dates dependent on the items, and that would be one of the items, which would be a submitted traffic plan, traffic and safety plan and logistical plan for the event.
So we're just looking at the dates?
Dates and level of participation.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add one small item here? I think by naming it Lunar New Year, I have a less of a concern with Saint Tao putting the name there, but I am very concerned that with the event should be called Lunar New Year instead of a Chinese New Year, because of all the good things that we, good comments that we got last year, I did get some angry comment from, I believe, Vietnamese resident. And he was angry that we're calling it Chinese. He said, you know, there are a number of cultures celebrate Lunar New Year, Vietnamese for example, and I think Koreans not entirely coincide, but for the most part, they do follow the Lunar New Year. And way back when, the Japanese used to have the Lunar New Year at the same time as well. And there are a number of other cultures and they also celebrate the New Year at the same time. So I'll be very, I'll caution as calling it a Chinese event, because we really wanted to be inclusive and, and we want to embrace the diversity. And, and one last thing was that the benefit to the community, and there was one restaurant, the folks I talked to, they were very, very happy with the event. They said that was the best day ever they ever had. There were so many people coming to them, so. And I really see it not just as an entertainment for us, for the greater St. Gabriel Valley area, it's also a way to promote our local businesses. Thank you.
Okay. I have a number of thoughts on this. One, I think, I support, I support the event. It's a question of how big, what's included, who pays, all of the other type of stuff. Expanding it from Temple City Boulevard to Roland is basically going to shut down a good chunk of the city, going north and south. So I, I'm a little concerned about the overall scope of the project. The alcohol, I agree, I don't think it should just be open. I think it's got to be very controlled. You know, the, the Camellia Festival, which we did this year, that was very controlled. It went very well, but it was very controlled. There was, you know, a lot of staff making sure that that worked very, very well. So I think if, if we proceeded with any alcohol, it would have to be under the same type of restrictions that, that they had for the Camellia Festival. As far as, you know, and I know some, some businesses along there benefited. I heard from a number of others that said, "You killed my business for two days," because everybody was out. And if it's, you know, if they're not directly connected with it, you know, it does affect the businesses there. It shuts them down. People can't get into their businesses. And so that, you know, that's, that's an issue. There's two costs in here that I see. They're asking us to absorb about $33,000. And again, I think the question was asked, this is not a nonprofit organization. Saint Tao is a, you know, they're in business to, you know, to make money. So therefore, I'm concerned, the amount of money they're asking us to pick up. And not only money, I think there's a concern with staff here. If I recall last time, staff put in a lot of effort to make that work. And while people say that's fine, you got staff there, but staff is not doing other things that we want them to be doing to do this. And, you know, these are big efforts. I mean, it's just not a matter of, you know, leaving at noon on Friday and going to work on this, that there's quite a bit of staff working on it. I'm really not supporting the city picking up costs on this. I think it's a slippery slope. I think anybody else comes in and says, "We want to celebrate something or other and, you know, please, please pay most of the costs." I mean, we've, we've already had other people in town that have put on events and they've had to pay for the, the street banners. And, you know, for us to go waving some of this stuff, I think is very inconsistent with what we're doing. They're asking us to do basically all of the, major part of the promotions, pick up the cost for, for promotions, to distribute flyers, to do all the advertising. And I guess I'm inclined, if this, you know, this is a major newspaper, it seems like they'd be a heck of a lot better at it than we are getting the publicity out there. So I, I have concerns with this. I support the event. I think it was a good event, but I think it's got to be, I, I would not want to be putting city money into this. And so I think it's, the cost is one thing. The alcohol is another thing. So I'll, I think those are my comments. And if we wish any more discussion here, we can have it.
Let me just add one, one note on the cost. I think it really comes down to how much the city wants to be an integral sponsor of such an event and how much, and how much do we really want such an event for us? I, the way I look at it is perhaps a little bit different than, oh, Saint Tao is a profit-oriented organization coming in and wanting us to contribute and, and leave with a bunch of money. I don't think that's the intent of such an event, because I, I know Saint Tao for a long time. They're a very reputable organization. They're really, while they are not a non, not a nonprofit, they are really more for a community service or organization. I think, given, we need to ask ourselves, do, what kind of venue, what kind of event do we need to put out for our other Asian residents? And what can we do to attract them to an event such as a culture event that they all celebrate? Can we on our own put together an event such as this? I mean, we have done other New Year events with the Temple City Chinese Association, but it was for the most part very small, attracted very few people. It did not have the publicity, it did not have the foot, foot trucks and other things and other shops and other things that, that had been, that we could have attracted. In other words, I do not think that we as a city can actually put together a successful event such as this. I think there should be some, if we so desire, if we think this is desirable to our residents or for that two days, that we need to have an event such as this, I think we need to seriously consider maybe not picking up the entire tap, because actually I have a question on the equipment. Why is the equipment costing $85,000?
Eighty-five-hundred.
Eighty-five-hundred, I'm sorry. That perhaps there need to be, just like organizing other, other events in a park, concerts and other things, that what is, that, what should be our level of investment in such an event? Because I do not feel that we can put together an event without some, some outside help such as this.
Can, I just like to respond to that, because I really enjoyed the, the event. But, but if we look at even the Camellia Festival and how that became an organization, it was very small when it started. You know, it was a small group of people, of people who wanted to celebrate, you know, the children and the community and the sports. And so that group of people initially took ownership of thinking this was valuable for the community. And that's what I would hope that our, you know, Asian community would do, since this is so valuable and important, that they too, you know, would get involved. And not everything starts big and huge in a celebration that has tradition and meaning. Most of the time, things that have the most tradition in families are the little things, you know? Families at Christmas, making cookies, and then it, it goes on and it passes down. But, you know, so I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that it's the city's responsibility to take on every, you know, type of event that a population in our city or residents might want to do. I mean, I love that we have diversity in our city. Most of my neighbors are Asian. We get along great, you know? We exchange food and, and I encourage them, "Come out, you know, and, and celebrate and do things." And I have to say that most of my neighbors now are coming and coming out to things. So I think what it takes is, it takes a group, like this young gentleman who came up and I, forgive me, I, what is your name?
William Mann.
William. William took the time to come, come up here and say, you know, "This is a, this is a great event. This is something that is so much our heritage and so much our tradition." And I say, "Yes, let's celebrate that." But, you know, William, maybe you're that person who's going to, you know, do what the Camellia Festival did how many years ago? Sixty-some years?
Seventy.
Seventy years ago, that's right. Seventy years ago. So I understand Vincent, what you're saying and, but I think that everybody has a responsibility to make things that they feel important and make them grow. So I, and I love the event. I just, I too have a hard time, you know, saying that so, so much, I had, just for a couple of days ago, I haven't been feeling well, is when I actually looked at all the numbers and I was quite surprised at how much that Saint Tao was asking for the city to support this time. So I do have a concern about that. Not the event, not us cosponsoring it, not us helping them to the extent that we possibly do with, you know, staffing, but I think it might be too much this time.
Yeah, if I, I could just add, you know, the things that we are providing, I think we're all willing to provide, is basically our streets. I mean, we're saying you can shut down, you know, our main streets in town for a couple of days to do that. You can use the park that we have here, so we're providing the facilities. I think it's all these extra costs that I'm, I'm concerned with. If you recall, last meeting, we approved the budget for next year and this was not included in the budget. Our reserves, well, we had some, it wasn't very much. So we don't have a ton of money that we're, you know, that, or surplus, I guess, that we were looking at here. So I'm concerned with that. I mean, there are other needs and, you know, everybody comes forward, would like to get a chunk of money out of us for this. So, so I, I guess I would support this event with these dates. You know, with, with the relook at the costs here, I don't think, I don't think we can, can provide all these and I'm not so sure I can spell them all out right now, what I'd, you know, we should do, but.
Perhaps, you know, I agree that, you know, $30,000 is a lot of money. I think perhaps that, and actually I mentioned that to the city manager before, that perhaps we should authorize the city manager to work with Saint Tao and maybe come back with a different, you know, with a, with a different proposal. I think having the event, I think it's, I think council can support. But I think we all have a little bit heartburn perhaps when we look at the numbers, myself included. So perhaps that's, you know, we can approve the event in concept with the dates, tentative dates, and ask the city manager to come back with, work with a Saint Tao, come back with something that the full council can support.
Okay, would you like to put that in form of a motion?
Yeah, I would make that as a motion.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, that item has passed as, as stated, as moved. Okay, we'll move to item B, item 10B under new business. It's a letter of support for Senate Bill 1086, the Safe Neighborhood Parks, Rivers and Coastal Protection Bond Act of 2014. Could we have a presentation from our Parks and Recreation Director, please?
Thank you. Good evening, council. At your last meeting, Parks and Recreation Commission Chairman Donna Giorgino requested that the city council consider providing a letter of support for SB 1086, sponsored by the California Parks and Recreation Society and authored by Los Angeles Senator Kevin DeLeon. SB 1086 creates a framework for a future.
Could you hold off a second? We need to get council member Chavez back in.
Mayor Protem, yeah.
Mayor Protem, yes.
Thank you.
I think he, he went out, out after him.
I forgot about him.
Huh? We were just having such a good time here that.
I fell asleep anyway, so.
I'm sorry. That was my test.
Okay, we're now on item 10, 10B, I believe it is, the Parks Bond Letter of Support. All right. Okay, Kathy, start your presentation here.
Thank you. I'll just continue.
I read the report.
SB 1086, in essence, creates the framework for a future Park Resources Bond Act. If it is adopted by the voters in November, if it gets that far, SB 1086 would authorize the issuance of bonds, currently at an unspecified amount, to finance a safe neighborhood, parks, rivers and coastal protection program. With the completion of many component, or, I'm sorry, with the, the adoption of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan recently, completion of many of the components are dependent upon outside funding sources, including grants. This proposed bond act would provide significant funding for local park infrastructure through either competitive or per capita funding sources. Local public agencies are strongly encouraged to send letters of support for SB 1086 to ensure adequate funding is included in the bond act for city, county and regional park and recreation agencies and not all for nonprofits. Attached to the staff report is a draft letter that we are requesting the council consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Okay, are there any council questions for?
No.
Okay, I'd like to open for public comments. Okay, I'd like to open the, for public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to, uh, comment on this item? If not, I will close public comments. Uh, council comments. Councilmember Sternquist.
I'm sorry, I just had a break.
Okay? Okay, council member you.
I, I think it's a great idea. I think we should support it. Um, I mean, we, we, as we do our, we, we just, uh, have finished our Parks and Open Space Master Plan. We talked about it in the last council meeting and, uh, yeah, we definitely can use some funding, so, um, I'm definitely for this support.
Yeah, I, I, I agree as well. I think it's a good timing, um, and, uh, hopefully, uh, you know, they'll get some funding and we can take advantage of that. So always looking for different sources, so I agree.
Okay, I, I also agree. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we, um, authorize the mayor to sign a letter supporting Senate Bill ten eighty-six, the proposed Safe Neighborhood Parks River, River and Coastal Protection Bond Act of twenty-fourteen.
Okay, you could have a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The item is unanimously approved. We now go to item C is the first reading and introduction of ordinance number fourteen dash nine-nine-four. An ordinance of the city of Temple City amending section three dash two C dash two. It's a secondhand smoke control. Uh, there's other numbers here. Um, we'd have the Public Safety and Service Manager make a presentation.
I, I'm not sure who he is. Maybe he went out and had a cigarette, I'm not sure.
Any cigarette?
Any, of course. Andrew, do, do you see him? Okay, thank you.
Robert, I hate to tell you, we're questioning whether you're out having a cigarette on this one.
Council, Mayor, Mayor Blom, council members before you tonight is the first reading and introduction of ordinance fourteen dash nine-nine-four, which amends section three two C dash two of the secondhand smoking control ordinance and section three of, um, section three dash five D dash nine, park activities behavior. Over the past few years, the city has enacted several amendments to the Temp- Temple City Municipal Code that collectively are aimed at maintaining and enhancing the city's quality of life. Staff meets regularly with the city codes, review standing committee to address deficiencies in the Temple City Municipal Code. Examples of that are the Title X, adoption of the L.A. County Animal Code, public nuisance regulations and, uh, smoking regulations, the tree preservation and protection ordinance and the trash can placement and time ordinance. In light of recent studies that examine the dangers of electronic smoking devices, resident complaints of persons using electronic smoking devices in city parks, as well as regulations passed by other Southern California cities, staff decided to meet with the city codes ad hoc committee to consider extending the city's current smoking regulations to include electronic smoking devices and get direction to prepare a draft amendment and present it to the city council for consideration. Electronic smoking devices are promoted as a new and safer way of smoking and sometimes are marketed as a means of achieving smoking cessation. E-cigarettes are act- are actually nicotine delivery products and the FDA has expressed concerns about the safety of electronic smoking devices that contain toxins and carcinogens like lead, nickel and chromium. The city's current secondhand ordinance currently prohibits smoking of tobacco and marijuana products in the following locations within the city. On city property, including city vehicles, enclosed public places, including public and private property that is open to the general public, like restrooms and elevators, service areas, including the public and private areas designated for people to wait for transaction, entry, exit or service, for example, ATM machines and ticket windows, outdoor dining areas, outdoor public events, outdoor seating areas and public transit, uh, stations. The proposed ordinance would place the same regulations on e-cigarettes that are already in effect for other tobacco products by adding a definition of electronic smoking device and referring the same verbiage in the existing smoking or to-smoke definition. The definition for electronic smoking device would be as follows. It shall mean electronic or battery operated device that delivers vapors for inhalation. This term shall include every variation and type of such devices, whether they are manufactured, distributed, marketed or sold as an electronic pipe, electronic hookah or any product name or descriptor. In the definitions of smoking or to-smoke, electronic smoking device and electronic cigarette have been added to the list of, of, um, in, that verbiage has been added to that definition to read, shall, definition smoking or to-smoke shall mean possessing or to possess a lighted tobacco product, lighted tobacco paraphernalia, lighted marijuana or any other lighted weed or plant, including but not limited to a lighted pipe, lighted hookah pipe, lighted cigar, lighted cigarette of any kind, an electronic smoking device of any kind, or the lighting or emitting or exhaling the smoke of vapor of a tobacco product, tobacco paraphernalia, marijuana product or any other weed or plant, included, including but not limited to a pipe, hookah pipe, cigar, marijuana product, electronic cigarette or cigarette of any kind. In the light of recent studies that examine the dangers of electronic smoking devices, staff is recommending that it is in the best interest to prohibit electronic smoking devices in an already designated smoke-free locations as necessary in order to protect non-users, including children and vulnerable populations from involuntary inhalation of these chemical vapors. The Los Angeles County Department of Public Health supports amending local smoke policies to include electronic smoking devices. To date, at least forty cities and counties in California have enacted ordinance to include electronic smoking devices in their existing smoke-free laws. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, are there any questions?
You know, I have a quick question that's not really specifically related to the e-smoking, but I notice in the, um, the behavior section of this ordinance, it allows Parks and Recreation Commission to grant permission for a person to actually smoke in our parks. Is that, is that something that says been there or? It says no person in a park or civic center shall, except as express written permission is granted by the Parks and Recreation Commission, smoke or possess a lighted tobacco product, including but not limited to cigars, cigarettes and any electronic smoking device.
That title has been, but the introductory line has been in the code.
So that's been there al- all the time. I wonder why we, why do we give the Parks and Rec Commission the right to grant people permission to smoke? Does that ever come up?
No. It's never come up in that regards. Uh, it's more for the other forty-five or so behaviors that are not allowed in the park, but there could be, um, sometimes, so that is not-
Like maybe, um, uh, well, I'll have to look at the rest of it, 'cause I just, that seemed unusual. That's why we've had it. It's been there for a while.
But the smoking is one of about fifteen behaviors or lists under that general heading.
Okay. We just have the small part. All right.
Okay, any other council questions? If not, we'll open it for public comments. Is anyone in the public here to comment on this? Mr. Jambezian.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. My name is Jerry Jambezian. I just have a question. Can somebody refresh my memory? Do we have no smoking within twenty feet of restaurants and businesses and would this apply to the e-cigarettes also?
We do have no smoking. In some instances, Jerry, it is, with regards to public buildings, it is fifteen feet. In other areas of the city, it stretches out to twenty-five feet and this would include, this would now be in, it would include electronic cigarettes now.
Well, for instance, let's say a, a new Chipotle comes in to where the Blockbuster was. Would there be something on their window that says no smoking within so many feet?
If they have outdoor dining, yes.
Do any of the restaurants have that sign now in Temple City?
Some, yes. If they have outdoor dining from, if, my recollection is the only one that has a sign is the outdoor portion of the Starbucks at the corner of Rose Mead and Las Tunas.
Is that like a corporate sign, uh, just for Starbucks or?
It is, um, it is a sign that was put up after, they asked us for ordinance that prohibited smoking on their outdoor area.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other, anyone else care to speak on this? Okay, if not, I'll close public comments. Council member comments?
I'll let you, let you start. I, well, I think it's consistent with the actions of other cities regarding this relatively new, um, form of tobacco use, uh, and I think it's a, a, a good option, a safe option until we really fully know the impact of these type of cigarettes. I know there are ongoing studies, but so far all have indicated that they're very similar to the dangers that we've talked about regarding regular cigarettes and other tobacco-related products, so I'm, uh, I'm, uh, good with this ordinance.
Okay, councilmember Sternquist?
I agree.
Councilmember you?
I, I agree in concept, but I want to clarify one, one thing, if I may. Uh, what I understand, because the way I'm reading it, um, public spa- uh, public place can be interpreted into sidewalk as well, but not limited to street sidewalk. So can, if we enact this ordinance, can somebody still smoke on the sidewalk? Outside city, 'cause sidewalk's owned by the city.
It is owned by the city, um-
So that means, does that mean that we, nobody can smoke in the city?
No, people can smoke in the city. They just can't smoke next to places that are, um, like an ATM machine-
Uh-huh.
-um, a ticket booth, places where there are people that are standing, um, and/or are stationary.
Yeah, that's a good point you bring, 'cause I think we have, remember we had that discussion, I think, when we were talking about the limitations on the cigarette smoke as well.
Our secondhand ordinance, our, our secondhand smoke ordinance would not be affected. All we are doing is we are adding electronic smoking cig- electronic cigarettes to be included in that list of types of smoking, of types of smoking that are allowable or not allowable.
That's it. I, I'm okay adding that.
Okay, yeah, I, I support this, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number fourteen dash nine-nine-four for first reading by title only, amending section three dash two C dash two of Article C of Chapter Two of Title Three and section three dash five D dash nine of Article D of Chapter Five. That's a lot of numbers. Of Title Three of the Temple City Municipal Code to include electronic smoking devices in the city's current smoking regulations.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in indic- indicate by saying, all those in favor indicate, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, it has been approved unanimously. Can we have the city clerk, uh, read by title only, please?
Thank you, mayor. Ordinance number fourteen dash nine-nine-four, an ordinance of the city council of City of Temple City amending section three dash two C dash two, secondhand smoke control of Article C of Chapter Two of Title Three and section three dash five D dash nine, park activities, behaviors of Article D of Chapter Five of Title Three of the Temple City Municipal Code.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, did, did we also schedule the second reading?
No, we, we need to do that now, so we need, I need a motion to-
Yeah, I would make a motion that we schedule a second reading of ordinance fourteen dash nine-nine-four for July first, twenty-fourteen.
We also need to wave-
And wave further reading of ordinance number fourteen dash nine-nine-four.
Okay, it's been moved, moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, it's carried unanimously. We now go to item eleven, communications. Uh, item A is an update on the city's new website. I believe Assistant City Manager and recent world traveler, uh, Brian Hayworth is here to, uh, give us an update.
Oh, good evening, city council, mayor and city council members. Um, the item before you is a quick update on the city website as requested by both the mayor and councilmember you. Um, tonight's discussion, we'll just hit on three themes or three topics, the chronology of where we are, um, some of the challenges and opportunities, uh, that, uh, we're, we're working with, as well as moving forward, um, as well as a proposed launch date that we wanted to share with you. So to give you a real quick project chronology of the new city website, as you recall, back in October two thousand twelve, the agreement was executed with Civic Plus. Um, the agreement, uh, or rather the scope of work that was executed with Civic Plus was much different than what other cities do. Uh, we had told Civic Plus, who does have government, um, uh, contracts, that we wanted a city website that wasn't, um, template-based, that, um, there was a unique feel and, and brand to our new website. Um, following in November two thousand twelve, um, staff began, uh, the development of, uh, web copy or another, that's just fancy speak for starting to write all the web pages, as well as to figure out, um, how that would be organized into the new city website. Um, in December two thousand twelve, we started the navigational backend designs, um, how the different components would work, how the, uh, menu structures, uh, would read, uh, how things would work, um, from a, uh, from, essentially from the backend. Uh, February two thousand thirteen, um, when we were looking at design components for the Rose Mead Boulevard Enhancement Project, it opened a greater dialogue for the need for branding. Um, that we, uh, as a, as a result, in April two thousand thirteen, um, we had, uh, requested Civic Plus to provide us, um, a drawing of what our new website would look like, um, and you'll see this in a subsequent slide. Uh, you'll see that there was really no branding guidelines in place. And so in July two thousand thirteen, the council approved the new preliminary city logo, which then was finalized in August two thousand thirteen. And as part of the logo, there were other design, uh, components that, uh, were completed and adopted, which we'll talk a little bit more about later. In August two thousand thirteen, uh, the city moved forward with the concept redesign, uh, for the website and in, uh, later, at the end of that year, the preliminary concept redesign was complete. Um, and I just want to, uh, clarify that when we talk about a preliminary concept redesign, we're talking about what the website would look like. If you were to sketch it on a piece of paper, that's what it would be. Um, moving into earlier this year, uh, we wanted to now figure out how, with this new design, how would the, how would it equate into how the website would start to function? Um, as part of the mayor's, as part of councilmember Sternquist's state of the city address, um, she had said that we would do a beta launch. We anticipated for March two thousand twelve. Unfortunately, we hit, um, some issues with Civic Plus and their coding team.
It was two thousand fourteen, not two thousand twelve, right?
Two thousand tw- I'm sorry, did I, did I misspeak? I'm sorry.
You said twelve, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, two thousand, uh, four- I'm just gonna say earlier this year. How's that? I don't want to confuse myself. Um, uh, we tried to get the beta launch, uh, done in March two thousand fourteen. We didn't really get it done till, uh, May. We had some issues with staffing on Civic Plus's team, um, and that resulted in, um, new staffing, uh, to finish the coding. I'm happy to report, as of today, the design concept is complete, the navigational menu is complete and all the module developments is complete. Basically, those three, um, sentences in yellow basically means the website is ready to go, we just need to populate now the pages with content. Uh, this is your- This is your initial web comp that we first got from Civic Plus. It didn't really say anything about Temple City. In fact, I don't under, to me, it looks like a Jimmy Buffett cover to a CD with some of the hibiscus and palm trees. That's really not us. After going through our branding exercise, we got something much more clean, and something that resonates more with our design aesthetic, especially with Connect Magazine and some of the other marketing touchpoints you see in the community. Another thing I wanted to note to you is this does not look like every other city's website. What makes our new website unique is if you see the middle there with the different colored boxes right there, that's actually a scroll bar that goes from right to left that makes finding information much easier, and it allows us to post more information online, as well as a more intuitive calendar there on the bottom. So some unexpected challenges, as well as some opportunities presented themselves during the process. One of the big challenges that we faced was a lot of the information on our current website, we couldn't use in the new website. The writing is wrong, there's too much going on, it's easily outdated. We also hit some challenges with staffing. We had some people leave the city, including the city manager and the former city, former community development director, which presented some challenges in developing the website. We also had a reassignment of the contractor lead, meaning the coding team, but that since has been fixed, as well as we've had some project reprioritizations internally, most lately being the Roseme Boulevard Project, which I'm happy to report is complete, at least from our end. Some of the opportunities we were able to take away from is the completion of three online components, one of them being ActiveNet, which is the city's new recreation, online recreation program for Parks and Recreation activities. We're also finishing right now the Laserfish component, which now members of the public can look and search for all ordinances, all resolutions, all actions of the city council, and also NeoGov, which is the third, and the NeoGov is our new online HR and employment module. We also have a new opportunity with the new city manager, or interim city manager, as well as our new community development director, Michael Forbes, who will be helping us develop the remaining pages for the website. And another opportunity, and this is really important, is what we have so far is we have some really well-written webpages. It's intuitive content. We're keeping, we're realizing that when you write webpages, people look at webpages for 30 seconds, so we want to make sure that the information is posted and accessible easily. Moving forward, we're integrating those third-party applications like NeoGov, and ActiveNet, and Laserfish into the new website. We are completing the navigation menu and webpages for community development. I'd like to report that right now, all the web copy, or the webpages, we're about 75% complete. The community development pages are the last set of pages that need to be developed, and we'll be working with the new community development director on that. We're also finalizing the request tracker, online service request function, so people can go online and request services, whether it's a pothole or something that deals with a code enforcement function. And in talking with our interim city manager today, we are launching that website September 2nd, 2014. The project is being treated as a priority, and that's pretty much it. For those of you who'd like to see the production site, that slide there provides the hyperlink. So I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I think, I think we got what we were after, and that was an update, and let's make this thing happen, because I know we talked about launching it a while back, and it's sort of just.
Two years.
Went into limbo here for a while, and so, okay, so we're looking forward to September 2nd as the launch date, and, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now move to Item 12, update from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I have a few brief announcements. As you know, our summer concert series begins tomorrow night to kick off this year's summer concert series with the Wise Guys and their 18-piece big band ensemble. And if the band is not your thing, come next Wednesday for jazz and R&B with Tom Nolan Band. Both concerts start at 7:00 PM in Temple City Park. For more information and a complete concert lineup, visit the city's webpage. We also have a senior luau coming up. Seniors this Thursday join us at Live Oak Park for our annual luau. The fun begins at 4:30 PM with a barbecue dinner, followed by exciting Polynesian entertainment. The cost is $10 per person. For more information, contact the City Parks and Recreation Department. And then also, our summer youth activities begin on Monday, June 23rd, at Live Oak Park with sports classes and summer activities. Please consult with the summer issue of Connect Magazine for class listings and registration. And just one final announcement for the community's information, you may see some construction starting this week, and this week, the Community Development Block Funded Handicap Accessibility Improvements will be underway along Temple City Boulevard, which will involve the reconstruction of some curb ramps, improvements to pedestrian paths to ensure that there are no barriers for appropriate legal access for those that need ADA passive travel, and we'll also be putting some tree grates around some of the trunks and routes to create an easier path. And the project on Temple City Boulevard will between Woodruff Avenue and Live Oak, and that project will also include 11 city parking lots. So you'll see a lot of activity. It's all very positive, and I should add, as I mentioned, it is, it's a $200,000 project, and it is federally funded, so there are no local dollars that are be using to pay for these improvements.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. I think we've been sort of in a lull here for a little bit, and I don't think there's anything we have. I anticipate we'll be cranking it back up here in a little bit, but there's nothing to report at this time. 14, item 14, council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Sternquist?
Nothing.
Councilmember you.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Nothing, thank you.
Myself, nothing. Okay, item 15, reimbursement of expenses to city officials for conduct of city business and for city payment of conference expenditures. There is none. We will now recess to the successor agency of the Temple City Community Redevelopment Agency. I'd like to call that meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Agency member Sternquist?
Here.
Agency member Viscar is absent. Agency member you?
Here.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Here.
Chairman Blum?
Here.
Motion to excuse members, member Viscar, grid cause.
Okay, second.
So ordered. Item 3 is the consent calendar. We can approve all items in a single motion. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimously approved. Item 4 is unfinished business. There is none. Item 5, new business. There is none. Item 6, communication. There is none. Public comments. The successor agency will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. Seeing no one who would like to comment at this time, public comments are closed. Update from the executive director and agency council. There is none. Matters for agency members. There is none. Closed session. There is none. We are adjourned, and we reconvene as the full council. Item 17 is actions taken by city as successor agency to Temple City Redevelopment Agency. There is none. Okay, item 18, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Anyone care to? Okay, we will now close the public comments. There is, item 19, there is no closed session. We are adjourned until our meeting of July 1st. Thank you, everyone.